Appreciate you taking time on fairly short notice to join us for a town hall meeting to talk about our return to learning plans for this coming school year. I know you haven't had a lot of time to read through the documentation that we sent to you. I hope you at least had some time to at least scroll through some of it and to watch the videos that were provided in terms of the explanation of some of the different educational models. One of the reasons why we pushed this out as far as we thought we could is because we are faced with changes in interpretations every single day. As late as yesterday morning, three significant changes were given to me by the Ottawa County Health Department, which actually had to make some changes and adjustment in what we provided for you today. So please understand that that return to learning document that we provided for you is going to continue to change, be modified as need be, but we're going to do the best we can to keep you updated on changes that you'll need to be aware of. But it is a working document and again, it's something that we've been dealing with all summer long, where we have a week's worth of work invested only to have it all wiped out on Monday when something has changed again. So what we're using tonight for is an opportunity for you to ask questions of us. I will start with an overview. I appreciate Rachel Pasta Brown, Principal of Pinewood Elementary, joining me this evening. She'll kind of be that expert voice as we talk about specifics in the operations of the elementary buildings. I'll try to give the more 10,000 foot view from a district level for all of you. We've tried to break this up a little bit in terms of not all elementary at once. We have two elementaries joining us at after this meeting. I think it's about eight o'clock or somewhere in that vicinity. So I do want you to understand that first and foremost, we do have to keep in mind the safety and health of all of our students and all of our staff that's going to be working with our students. That is something that is first and foremost to our minds. But we also know the importance of getting our children back to school. One of the passion issue issues that's polarizing in our community is wearing a mask in particular. I understand, I mean, I've had people share with me scientific information evidences on both sides of the issue. We are required to follow the governor's my safe school roadmap for us to return to school and directions from the Ottawa County Health Department. And so we're doing that and I understand wearing masks is not always the most comfortable things in the world. It's not something that I enjoy doing myself, but I'll tell you, I'd be willing to wear a hazmat suit. If that meant we could get our children back in school, that's what it required. So with that, we'll answer your questions. Let me just highlight if you hadn't had a chance in terms of the face masks, since I brought that up, sure, it's going to be questions on everybody's mind, but for TK through second grade, our students will be asked to wear masks on the school bus if they're being transported as they enter the school building, but once they enter their cohort classrooms, they won't be required to wear their masks all the time. They only will be asked to put their masks on if another adult, like a specialist teacher is entering the room. And we do that because our specialist teachers will be exposed about 150 students a day. And so we want to keep in mind that this isn't just for them, for the students themselves, but for the adults as well in keeping them safe. The third through fifth graders will be following that similar example. And I should have mentioned with TK through second grade, when they're in common spaces as well, bathrooms, hallways, not out on the playground, third grade through fifth grade will follow that. And the only exception will be is we can't keep that six foot distancing in the third through fifth grade classrooms. They may be asked to wear the mask a little bit more in that environment. Sixth grade however, has been designated as a more of an, I guess, more of a middle school grade level from the state's eyes, and so they're going to be required to wear masks in the sixth grade classroom. And we'll do a little bit more commingling with our sixth graders while they're wearing masks in terms of ACT, in terms of our students that are taking accelerated math. We're going to do that virtually and so we'll be doing a little bit more of that in the buildings as well. So with that, I'm going to go right to the questions and some of these I'll answer. Some of them I'm going to toss to Dr. Brown and ask her to answer those as well. So the first question, what do the playground zones really look like? Are they using the equipment? How are you keeping them apart? Are masks worn outside of kids aren't able to socially distance in their zones? And that is a great question for Dr. Brown as a warm up question. So Dr. Brown, you want to take that one?
Sure, thank you, Tom. I just want to remind everyone, if you do have a question, you can put that in the chat and then we'll do our best to get to all of the questions. So first of all, our playground zones are going to look a little bit different at each building. They will be marked, will have markings up so that you, the kids will easily be able to see them. Depending on the playground, there might be some natural barriers that are easy for kids to identify what that area is going to be or what that zone will be for them. Within the zone, they're just going to be within their small cohort, so just their home room of kids. So they won't have to wear masks outside because they're just staying with that small cohort of kids that they're with within their classroom. So masks won't have to be worn outside at recess because we're not intermingling. And like I said, the zones will be different depending on building. There will be markers up that are easy for the kids to be able to see. And there will be depending on the building, like some, some natural areas that's easy. So like maybe it's like the wood chip area is one zone and the back by the soccer fields is another zone. And obviously we'll rotate that so that kids are not stuck in one zone for too long. I know that at Pinewood, our plan is to use those zones during lunch when we have to have muffle groups out. And then in the morning and in the afternoon, we are trying our best to adjust schedules so that we just have one class on the playground at a time and we'll rotate through so all kids get recess time.
In regard to the cleaning of the playground equipment, that is not something that is required at this point in time. I think the evidence that they're seeing is that the virus does not live on playground equipment. It would be really next to impossible for us to clean a piece of equipment after every child uses it. And so we're going to do our best to still monitor how many children are using that equipment in a given day and overnight. Certainly the virus won't live on those surfaces. That's what we're being told in terms of following the scientific evidence. And so we're going to use the equipment and not be able to clean that after every use. The second question for grades three through five, if room is at full student capacity, are masks required? Sounds like it for specials at the very least. Yes, if we're at full capacity and can't maintain that six foot distancing, we will be asking our students to wear masks. It will depend on how many of our students are choosing to use the virtual models that are in place as to what our capacity is going to be in our classrooms. And so we'll be adjusting that once we find out what the parent decisions are in regard to returning to school or using the virtual learning options. But certainly we're going to provide a safe environment. And if that means our students need to wear masks in third through fifth grade because we can't social distance, they may be asked to do so. Third question, will there still be playtime for the younger elementary students and activities to break up today? So they're not sitting at their desk all day, Dr. Brown?
Yeah, so of course, we're definitely going to have kids up and moving around. So they're going to have, like we said, recess regularly, we're not going to limit recess. And then within the room, we are going to be mindful of social distancing, but it doesn't mean that kids have to stay at their desks all day. So we have large classrooms, they can work on the floor away from each other. They're going to have their specials coming in and they'll get up and they'll do movement breaks. A lot of your kids probably have shared with you like Go Noodles or those kinds of things. Those are really easy to do and have the kids spaced out. So we want it to be the best educational experiences it can be for kids while still keeping them safe. And having them just sit all day is not going to be a great educational experience for them.
No, and we currently do that in our traditional instructional model anyway. We know students can't sit for a long time and, and just be talked at or sitting in a desk just doing seat work. They have to be up and moving and that's why we moved to flexible furniture a few years ago for all of our classrooms because the students need to move. And so there'll be, you know, we might bring back the brain gym activities and different things to get them moving. The last thing we want kids to do is be sitting for a long time, you know, at a desk. What do we define as mask face covering? Is neck gator that goes over the nose and mouth adequate? Yes, a neck gator is adequate and will serve as face covering. Initially, when the governor's roadmap came out, we were instructed that face coverings could be defined as face shields. So we purchased 1,500 face shields and up until last week Wednesday, face shields were going to be a option for students who had difficulty with face masks or for teachers, especially in the teaching of phonics where we need to be able to see the students lips moving and the teacher's lips moving in the forming of the sounds from phonics, et cetera. Last Wednesday, we were instructed that the face shields would no longer be acceptable apart from a face mask. And so, but in terms of the gator, that will certainly serve as a adequate face covering. We will be providing every child with a Geneson trademarked face mask at the beginning of the year along with a water bottle. Because we're going to also expect our students to have water bottles that they can fill. We're putting new water bottle fillers in our schools because our water fountains are not going to be able to be used. So we're putting some more fill stations in and we want to provide our students with at least one water bottle. So you may want to be maybe thinking about what water bottles you have around the house that you'd want to provide for your children in addition to that. But we will be providing them with at least one Geneson mask to start the year. Plus we'll have a lot of paper masks available if need be as well. For the first and second option, how soon can a family choose to transition back and forth? For example, if we start with one and it's not working for our student, can we switch to option two when the first few weeks of school? That's exactly how the extended traditional model is designed. We want you to test it out to see if it's working for your family. And so you'll have one opportunity to switch back from either your extended traditional, back into traditional, or from traditional to extended traditional. Now, there are always going to be extenuating circumstances and we understand that. And so with principal approval, if we need to switch more than once, we can work that through with the building principals, but there's at least one opportunity for you to try out either model and see what works best for you. And if there's extenuating circumstances, you can work with the building principals to make a switch if necessary. Is there going to be three and four preschool? I'll answer that one as well. Yes, there is. Our plan right now is that we're going to run preschool as it's always been run. If we get to a point where we have to go totally virtual learning for all students, our intent is to turn our preschool classrooms into daycare. Daycare has different regulations, different things that we can do with children in a daycare setting that we're not allowed to do in a traditional school setting. That's the plan today, whether that's going to change next week, we don't know. But that's how we're going to service our preschool students. We'll service them through our preschool curriculum, et cetera. And if we're forced to go into virtual learning for everyone, we're intending to turn that more into a daycare programming then. If I choose for Bauerwood child to be an extended student to meet the Friday deadline and the governor happens to change her course and have all students start as remote learners, can it be assumed that my child would be placed back with their original Bauerwood teacher to do online learning with that teacher? Yes, that's a great assumption. The only thing that we have to do is have a little bit of flexibility because we're going to have to move staff around with our students in terms of if 20% of the students are going to do virtual learning, we're going to have to move some staff around to, to be able to have those students as virtual learners. So depending again on how long we're into the school year or how short we're into the school year, we'll determine whether or not we're going to just, you know, make sure that the students that your children have been assigned to will remain with that teacher. There will make sure you're aware of that once we get the data in and start to reassess where staffing needs to be. There may have to be some adjustment, but that's a good assumption, hopefully we can maintain it. And back to Dr. Brown, will the kiddos get plenty of exercise, PE and normal recess?
Yep, hopefully we can already enter this, but they will get PE once a week, just like they normally do. And they will get their normal recess time. For most students, that is a short morning recess, their longer lunch recess and then a short afternoon recess. So all of those recesses will still be happening, but like we said, when there's other groups of kids on the playground, they'll be in with just their cohort of kids in a zone. And then when they schedule independently, they'll be able to roam free as to the space that is provided for them.
And you're going to start seeing around the district, 20 by 40 foot big white tents. We're not having a circus. We're also not having, you know, open houses on school property. What those tents are intended is for our classroom teachers to be able to take students outside and have classrooms learning outside. And so we're going to try to provide some alternative methods for our teachers to get the kids active and to spend some time outside learning as well. And that's what those white tents that you'll soon see, they've been a back order. I understand they're, they're coming soon and we'll start getting those up. If you've seen one behind the kids first building back there in the corner of the playground, that's what they're going to look like. What will happen if a teacher or a student in the classroom tests positive? Will the other kids need to be quarantined? And that is, I'm sure a question everybody wants the answer to and it depends. I just received today, we've been asking for this for three weeks, a flow chart from the Ottawa County Health Department in terms of what happens if a child has COVID like symptoms and what happens if a child or a teacher is diagnosed with COVID-19. And, and so this flow chart is very detailed, very extensive. And we will be working with the Ottawa County Health Department, I am sure on a daily basis, especially when we get to influenza season. And so if a child is diagnosed with COVID-19, what the plan currently is, is that the Ottawa County Health Department will come in and help trace where those students were, who was around them. It's all about distance and duration. So the distances, if you maintain six feet with masks and it's, you know, longer than 15 minutes, then you still could be quarantined because the duration is beyond the 15 minutes. So that's kind of the rule of thumb that's being talked about out there right now is distance and duration. Again, it could be that an entire classroom would be asked to be self quarantined for 14 days or it might be part of that classroom depending on again, who is around an individual for an extended period of time. And we'll use the Ottawa County Health Department to help us with that. Should that happen, that's why this extended traditional model is, you know, is intended for that purpose as well. So if we should happen to have a, a classroom that would be self quarantined, those students would immediately go into extended traditional model and follow right along as though they were in the classroom, continuing their education with direct teacher instruction. That's, that's the beauty of that extended traditional model. And if we all have to go virtual for some reason, all of us shift into the extended traditional model. It asks, okay, this is for a, this is for a secondary question. So Dr. Graham and I are going to be hosting a town hall meeting on Thursday beginning at 6:30 for all of these secondary questions. I will answer this one for tonight, but much more detail to come on Thursday night for the high school parents. And then for junior high, that will be, I believe, 8:15 following the high school one on Thursday night as well. But that Friday is intended to be like a blended learning day where students will still be asked to come in if they need extra help. AP teachers, I'm sure will want their students to be reporting, but it will be set up where students will be able to do a lot of the work that's being assigned online at home on Fridays. So it's kind of a blended learning day, a catch up day. It allows us to clean our buildings better without all the students there. And so that's why that Friday has been set up the way that it is. We're going to test it out at the high school since this block schedule is brand new for everyone. And if it's determined that that Friday is not working like it should, that may turn into just another block scheduled day where it would be like 1350 on Friday and a 246 on the next Friday. But we've got a couple of weeks here where we only have four day school days and we're going to find out how this block schedule is working for us. So it's going to be a little bit flexible in that regard. We'll come on that. And number 11, is it only the middle and high school that will not go back on Friday for the three week, three weeks or for all students? That would be for all students, that's our school calendar. So if you look at our school calendar, we're going to follow that school calendar as published. Is Geneson District able to be exempt from sixth grade mask mandate considering they are not in middle school? I posed that question many times, argued that question many times. Think about those school districts like Forest Hills that has a fifth and sixth grade building. That's half their building. No exceptions on that one. And no matter how hard we pushed, how much we argued, they're not bending on the sixth grade math mask issue. Is there numerous outbreaks? If there is numerous outbreaks in school, can we opt out of in person and go online halfway through? Yes, that's again, that traditional extended traditional model is intended for that. I've got those automatic lights that come on off, so I guess I'm not moving enough. Clap on, clap off, here we go. Will the school shutdown if a teacher or student comes down with COVID-19? Once again, it depends on the extent of the exposure. It's not going to be an automatic, one student gets diagnosed COVID-19 that we shut entire school down. Again, we're working directly with the Ottawa County Health Department. It will be depending on how many students were exposed, when the exposure took place. And again, how much we can get our buildings cleaned as well, when that exposure happened in what classroom. That's again, one of the reasons for the, for the cohorts and not commingling students is because we can isolate it to one classroom versus all of a sudden, you know, they're going to this special teacher, that special teacher, commingling with students throughout the building on the playground. Now we've got an entire building exposed versus these cohorts are just intended to be like cocoons where we're building this cocoon and we're going to introduce only a few adults into those cocoons on any given day. Will you offer in-home therapy for speech OT for a student with an IP that is doing virtual? My son's heading into kindergarten and will not be doing in person, Dr. Brown?
Yeah, so we're always going to uphold every IEP. So it just will depend on what is within the IEP and then how those services will be provided. It could be something where it is a online session that your student is getting. It could be if it's like a consult, it could be work that's sent home and then they touch base every few weeks. So all of that is just going to be dependent on the IEP. But within the traditional and the extended traditional, we are going to provide all of our IEP services for our students.
It's a great question here. Local Health Department has advised not using fans to further spread the virus. Without air conditioning in Bauerwood, my sixth grader wearing a mask all day. What is the plan to keep students from overheating or becoming dehydrated? We have been in extensive dialogue with Dr. Heidel, who leads the Ottawa County Health Department. He understands that it's not very realistic in buildings that do not have air conditioning to not be able to have the movement of air. And so we're going to be still utilizing some fans in ways that are not directed at students. And we'll continue to provide students with not only water breaks, but expectations that they're, they're drinking water and staying hydrated. If we get into a situation where we, what we encountered, I believe, in last September and the September before where we have really, really hot days, 90 degree days, we may have to have like a half day of school on those days because we can't expect our students to be in a classroom without air conditioning when they're heating up like ovens. So that's something that we may have to consider. But that's something I know may be a hardship on parents who have to work and wonder what they're going to do with their children should that happen. So we'll keep all that in mind and certainly, you know, our students need to be as comfortable as possible. One of the things that are, is on that, on proposal that you've heard me talk about many times is the necessity of adding air conditioning ventilation to our buildings. We hope we get the chance to do that as soon as possible. Since cold symptoms are similar to COVID, how do we plan to work with this? Will students not be allowed at school if they have a stuffy nose, et cetera, with no fever? I do not plan to have my kids get COVID tests every time they have some symptoms like a cold. Wow. Somebody's been eavesdropping my wife and my conversation the entire summer. For those that don't know, my wife's a school nurse. And she and I have gone back and forth numerous times on how we're going to handle influenza because the symptoms of COVID and the symptoms of influenza are almost identical. And so we're going to have to figure out how we differentiate between the child with the stuffy nose that has, you know, the common cold versus symptoms of COVID-19. We have some guidelines that's been provided to us by the Health Department. And certainly we agree that every time a child has a symptom of a common cold that we're not going to make them self-isolate or not be in school for a period of time or have to go get COVID tested. On the other hand, we've got to be very careful in regard to, you know, students exposure to other students who may have some COVID-19 symptoms. So we are going to do everything we can on both sides of that issue to try to make some determination. And again, we'll be on the phone every single day with the Ottawa County Health Department asking for their judgment in some of these situations. We do the best we can. One of the things I think that parents, you need to be fully aware of is that when we get into the start of school, parents are expected to screen their children before sending them. And so we've got to do a really good job at home of making sure we're not sending our children in the buildings if they have a fever and the, the point that they're telling us right now is 100.4. So anything 100.4 above, children should not be coming to school. And if they, if they have something that is contagious, if it is what we consider the common cold, it would be a good thing to keep your child home. And again, one of the things that I think will be advantageous to us, if a child's home for a few days and they're a traditional learner, they can tune in to the extended traditional even though you're not signed up for that model. So that gives us that flexibility. So if I'm a parent, my child's got, you know, the influenza. I really don't want him to fall behind, but I don't want him to expose other children to what he has. I can keep him home for three days and tune into the extended traditional model. We'll try to, to make that work as much as we can. So are kids allowed to wear masks that stay around the neck and they can just pull it up when needed? And that was a question about the gators that I believe is what a gator is called. It's around the neck, pull it up, those are certainly okay to wear. Will there be measures taken to protect students' medical privacy? That is a very important question for us. It's HIPAA violations for us. So Dr. Brown, I'm going to let you take a shot at that. And I've been doing a lot of talking, so I'm going to give you a shot at this one.
Sure, so of course, we're going to keep everyone's medical information private, even if there is a child who has Um even if there is a uh child who has COVID symptoms within a classroom, we would never identify who the child is. Um I mean, we would handle it the same way as the health department right now has a scandal, it's strep throat. Um so all that information is always kept private, and if we have to, we notify. Um and make sure that we're keeping everyone else safe while still protecting their, their medical um privacy. Because that is, it's super important to us, just like all educational privacy is. Um the next question X asks about uh buses running, and our buses will be um running. Um so that, that we will have transportation um still being provided for students. Um we'll space out kids as much as possible within the bus, and there'll be some uh seating moves that will have families grouped together. Um instead of like ages grouped together, um but that would be the next question that's on there is the buses running. And Tom, I'm just gonna take a couple more, just because I think that they're easy ones. Uh the hand washing and sanitizing, that's going to happen throughout the day, so that's just gonna be part of our normal procedures. Kids enter the building, they wash their hands, select what they want for lunch. Before and after snack, they wash their hands, before recess, they wash their hands. So um all of our classrooms have sinks in them, so we, we will be doing that routinely. And um we also have the hand sanitizers within rooms, so that's just gonna be part of our normal protocols, and kids will get used to it. That within their day schedule, there's gonna be, you know, between four and six hand washing times for them.
And the, uh back to the buses for a minute. We're going to do everything we can on our bus runs to have families sitting together. Um it won't be sixth graders get to the back of the bus and first graders in the front of the bus. Families will be sitting together uh in assigned seats. After every run, the buses will be sanitized. Uh we'll have um the hand sanitizing. Uh right now, we, we're, we're working on the mist, so when students get on, they just have to ha- put their hands underneath the mist. Uh and that will, you know, provide that hand washing in that location. Every classroom is being equipped with hand sanitizing mist machines as well. And what will happen if a student refuses to wear a mask in class, Dr. Brown?
So obviously, at the elementary level with K five, we would work with that um child in it, it, within common spaces. So they wouldn't be able to transition until they put the mask on. Um so we would um work with them, just like we would any other behavior to walk, work, walk through what's the cause, why is it happening? Um if it is a sixth grader and they just won't re- wear it all, all day, then that would be something we need to sit down and talk with parents about. Um and that might be something that, you know, would be a better extended traditional, if they just can't handle it all day long. Um you know, obviously, there'll be unique circumstances. Um but we, we're gonna handle it like we would uh other behaviors, and we will work to um come up with a solution that's gonna work for the. For the child and for the classroom, so that we're keeping everyone safe.
It's gonna be, you know, something that. It's gonna be a struggle for teachers and principals and administrators, because we certainly don't want. The mask to become the issue of the day. Um and we don't want um students being disciplined per se for not wearing masks, but it is a requirement. Uh so we need cooperation on the part of the parents uh working with us and their child. Uh to understand the importance of why we have to wear masks, and what we can do to make it more comfortable. And accommodating for those students that are having difficulty with their, uh wearing masks. What happens if a student tests positive for COVID in regard to other students in the classroom? Also, what symptoms will be considered COVID symptoms? I have a very lengthy document in front of me, and um symptoms could entail. Temperature a hundred point four, or signs of fever, chills, sweating, sore throat. New uncontrolled cough that causes difficulty breathing, diarrhea, vomiting, abdominal pain. New onset of severe headache. Uh that gives you some of the symptoms uh that we certainly will be looking at and evaluating. Again, if a child is di- diagnosed with COVID nineteen. That's something we have to make um parents aware of, understanding HIPAA uh is involved as well. So um we'll take our direction with the Ottawa County Health Department in terms of their tracing, whether we have to. Have everybody in that classroom be self-isolated uh for a period of time. Or if parents choose to do that for their children on their own. So there, there'll be some directions that we're gonna have to take again from now, with County Health Department on that. When the kids go back from extended learning to traditional learning, will they go back to the original class teacher? Or the teacher they are assigned to for extended learning? Again, that will depend on how many students are starting in the extended traditional model. If we have to shift teachers around, we'll do our very best to keep students with the teacher to whom they've been assigned. But if we have a teacher, for example, that's teaching twenty kids remotely uh from a building. And then we go back to, you know, where we're all virtual, it's gonna be difficult to say, well. Those twenty students this teacher was working with and built relationships with, you're gonna go back to your original teacher. And um and start all over again, because again, we're very, very big on the importance of building relationships with kids. Uh and so we're gonna, we're gonna have to monitor the best we can, try to maintain student-teacher assignments, but we can't guarantee it. If you start your child traditional and then get uneasy and want to swap them to extended traditional. Are you saying they have to stay virtual at that point? Or when you feel comfortable, send them back and they go back to traditional? I know you said one time, swap, trying to get clarification on starting traditional and switching to extended if things seem to decline. So yes, uh you, you will be able, if you start in a traditional model and switch to the. Extended traditional model, but then everything seems to be getting better. And all of a sudden, a lot of people wanna switch their kids back to traditional, we'll welcome that. Uh what we can't have is every other week, uh people, you know, deciding, well, this week I'm feeling more comfortable, so I'm gonna send my kids back. Oh, next week, I'm gonna keep them home, as you might imagine, from a staffing standpoint, from a programming standpoint. Uh that, that just will make a mess of everything and not allow us to, to have the continuity that we need. Um with teachers and students and building relationships. Uh and so my hope would be that we start, those families start traditional. Other families start in the extended traditional, and by October, all of a sudden, COVID nineteen is a non-issue. And we've got most of our uh extended traditional parents wanting to come back to the traditional model. We'd welcome everyone back, welcome with open arms, even if that meant some people had, you know, transferred once already in, in that model. How is the situation where a sibling has positive COVID test handled? Ie, a middle school student is positive, but a younger brother in the elementary has not been tested? That's a great question, um and we've posed that several times as well. Again, it's gonna be an Ottawa County Health Department decision. Um my guess would be, in that situation, that once a family member in a home is diagnosed with COVID nineteen. That all the children in that home are going to be um self-quarantined uh for a fourteen-day period. That's not a guarantee, but that's the answer to that question that I've been given. Because it is in the home environment, everybody are, is in close proximity, so then all the children will be. That's what the tracing is all about. So if a middle school student who is going to be moving a little bit more than an elementary student. And that middle school student is uh, has been in four different areas. Again, keep in mind duration and distance. And so the tracing will be, who are you around, for how long were you around that individual? Um and that may require um other individuals to help, have to be self-quarantined as well. Uh are face shields acceptable instead of masks? I addressed that earlier on. Uh we were told they were. We purchased fifteen hundred face shields, have those in the district ready to go. And we're just told last Wednesday that the face shields will no longer be acceptable in place of a face mask. Now, with that being said, we may utilize those face shields in a TK through fifth-grade classroom. When we're doing things like phonics. If somebody's more comfortable wearing a face shield than not having anything on at all. It's because we may have students that wanna wear their masks all day in a TK through a fifth-grade classroom, and that's, that's perfectly acceptable. Uh it might be where a student wants to wear a face shield. Uh instead of a face mask when you're not expected to wear a face mask, that will be acceptable as well. So we'll try to work with every child uh to, to find their comfort level and, and so. What does the Burzley pickup and delivery look like? Well, can you answer that question, Dr. Brown, since you're at Pinewood?
I can answer for Pinewood, if you want me to.
Oh, so Burzley, as you know, I mean, Burzley's, believe it or not, has the biggest parking lot of any of our elementaries. Uh and so I know that our new principal, Ms. McGoren, is working on those details. We'll be communicating those details out. Um we're gonna have to really work through the dynamics of those drop-offs in the morning, because we can't have. Students being dropped off at seven-thirty and congregating out in the playground, waiting to be able to get into school. So that's gonna be information, our print, matter of fact, we're gonna be spending all day Thursday. As building administrators with district administrators, working through those exact details. So we'll try to provide some continuity and consistency for all buildings, but every building's a little bit different. As Dr. Brown said, for Pinewood, it's gonna look a little different possibly than it will for, uh for Burzley. Could you please go over the student learning options TK through sixth grade? And Dr. Brown certainly can do that. Uh if you have the parent intent form, there's also a video that Dr. Brown put um together for you. And um feel free to go and watch that video as well, but Dr. Brown, you wanna take another crack at it?
Sure, so just uh the, a real brief overview, our traditional is gonna be kids within our building. On our normal school calendar and schedule, every day, Monday through Friday at the elementary level. Um and we'll be doing social distancing, um as, as we've talked about, masks a lot this evening. Uh masks will be wore for sixth grade all day unless they're eating or drinking. Um in common areas for TK through um fifth. And if a unique um adult comes into the classroom, like a specials teacher. And then uh they're going to be getting the, the same curriculum as what we normally would do. Extended traditional is going to be online, it also is a Monday through Friday program. Um but within that, um they are going to have live sessions that students can log into. Um and they'll kind of have their own extended uh traditional little classroom that they're logging in with. They'll have a teacher that's a Genesund teacher, and they're gonna follow the same curriculum and same pace as what's happening in the traditional. So whatever's happening in week one in traditional is happening in week one in extended traditional. Um and then um as we've also talked about a lot this evening. If you um would like your child to transition um from one to the other. Uh well, you'll work with your building principal to make that happen. Um most of the time, we won't be able to make it happen overnight, but within a couple of days, we should be able to make that happen for you. Um and then the third option is our JIA, um which is a uh fabulous online program that has over um ten years of experience. Um and is definitely um one of the top programs in the state. That one, you do have to commit to a full semester, because it's more individualized when it comes to pacing. Um and it doesn't stay right on track like we do, kids are able to kind of go faster or slower in that program. Um and so that would be your third option of JIA, but that would be the one that you'd commit to for the year. Um and they, they have wonderful programs. All the programs are gonna be great for kids, it's gonna be what's your comfort level as a family.
If you go on vacation, you have to quarantine when you come back. Um we're not the vacation police, and so all we would ask is that you would follow the, the CDC guidelines. Um or the, the health department guidelines uh when you go on vacation. And um and then we would hope that our families going on vacation would practice um social distancing. Um wearing masks if appropriate, and not putting your family in any risky situation. Uh where they could contract um COVID nineteen and then bring it back into the district. Uh I'm not sure, so I haven't even, haven't been on vacation, I haven't looked at being on vacation, whether you can even leave the country yet. So um maybe that uh is a spring break question, or a Christmas vacation question, and hopefully. Uh we're at a point where we don't even have to ask that question come that time period, I'm the eternal optimist, so I'll keep hoping that way. But you go on vacation, that's on you, uh just to make sure your family's safe. And uh when they come back to school, we're not gonna ask where you went, or how long you were there, who you were around, or anything like that. Will elementary still have an opportunity for orchestra this year? Well, there is a great question. Uh actually, our music teachers just sent me an email just before our, our town hall meeting. And asking when they can send this communication out to parents. Uh our fifth-grade orchestra students will not be starting this fall, nor will our fifth-grade band students. We hope that we'll be able to start them in January, but again, it will depend on where we're at with COVID nineteen. However, we do have sixth-grade students who already have an instrument and who need to continue learning that instrument. Plus, parents could be renting an instrument and want their children to continue to progress. Uh our orchestra teachers have stepped up and said, we want to provide uh opportunities for our sixth-grade orchestra students to continue. Uh to, to advance in their skill with each instrument, and so they will be providing. Uh opportunities for them, uh for the students to be working with our directors. Both in the building and in um other locations, potentially around the district. Uh but those options will be made available and schedules will be put out per building, I believe, Dr. Brown?
Yeah, um that is correct, so it'll be different per building, but um at each building, sixth graders will have. At this point, uh opportunity two mornings before school, is what we've discussed in one time during the school day.
Next question, plans stated no extracurricular clubs after school, what does this include? Secondly, many jobs such as reading groups are led by parent volunteers, how will this be done? Both of these questions are referring to elementary level, thanks. Yes, right now, for this fall, we're not gonna have any after-school clubs, activities. Um whatever you consider to be extracurricular beyond the school day, we're not gonna be holding uh those clubs. Again, our hope is second semester, we'll be able to put those back in place, but for right now, we need to limit. Um the time the students are being exposed, uh the time that they're at school. And we're trying to mitigate that, what I use the term cross-pollinization of students, uh you know, co-mingling of students. Uh between each other, and so that's one, another reason why we're not gonna run clubs or programming at the end of school day for our elementary groups. Also, it uh, it's something that we, we've discussed and really breaks my heart, quite honestly. Because of how important our parent volunteers are to the, our students' learning. Uh I know we have powerful uh literacy program that involves our parents coming in and, and reading to our children. Or listening to our children, to read, children read. Right now, we have to say we can't allow that to happen, because it's introducing too many new adults into the building. And um, and so we have to keep it just as, as sterile as we possibly can, and so there won't be any volunteers. Coming into our building at this point in time, again, hopefully, as the year progresses, we'll be able to make that happen. For example, if a visitor comes into the, the building to drop off, Johnny forgot his lunch, or Suzie forgot, you know, something that she needs. Uh we're gonna be asking parents to drop that off in the um security foyers. And communicate through the foyer into the office that you're dropping off a lunch for Johnny. And they'll come out and, and get that, make sure Johnny gets his lunch, or Suzie gets whatever she needs. Um what we're gonna try to do is to, again, mitigate the amount of people even coming into our offices. Because how it is, all of our sick rooms are in basically the elementary offices. So we're working to figure that out as well, but we wanna keep as much exposure out of the building as possible. If a student rides bus to school, where will they go after they are dropped off, Dr. Brown?
So each building is gonna have um designated areas for each homeroom. And so uh we're, we're lucky with our buses and with our transportation. Um that we work very closely with them, and they don't drop off to school. Um earlier than ten minutes before the bell rings, most of the time, it's usually five minutes before the bell rings. And so then, once that drop happens, um we'll go over with students where their entry door is for their homeroom. Um so students will go right to that entry door at each building, that's gonna be a little bit different. Um and then their teacher will be there to, to greet them there and have them come in. So um if students are, were walkers or parent drop-off, and they're used to getting to the playground early to play on the playground. That won't be an option this year, because we can't intermingle kids. And so um whether they're dropped by the bus, or whether they're dropped by parents, or whether they walk. Um they'll follow the same procedure and they'll go to that um door, that is where their homeroom is. And then um their teacher will be there to greet them and let them in. That's why it's gonna be really important that we don't have kids dropped off early. That's why it's going to be really important that we don't have kids dropped off early. We won't have supervision on our playground, and we won't be able to have kids intermingling on the playground. So it will be them coming and waiting by that homeroom school for their, or homeroom door for their teacher to greet them.
Next question, what will lunchtime look like? And Dr. Brown certainly could answer that, but I'm going to answer this one because it's one of the most exciting questions I get to answer, quite honestly, because several years ago, Bauerwood Elementary moved to a model where children were eating in their classroom instead of in the gym slash cafeteria. And it was a teacher-led movement, which was even more exciting. And I went down to every classroom at Bauerwood throughout the year and asked the students what they would prefer. And a hundred percent of the students never found one student that said they wanted to go back to the gymnasium to eat their lunch. They gave me every reason why it was such a wonderful thing to eat in their classroom. It was quiet. They didn't have to worry about who they're going to sit with. They got to eat their full lunch. And we use that time as part of our literacy block, where teachers actually are reading to the students while they're eating. And they absolutely love that. I mean, if you remember back to your elementary days, if you remember teachers reading a chapter of a book, I know I can remember that was a long time ago, but one of the things I looked forward to was that next chapter in that book. And so every student, just like I said, endorsed eating their classrooms. And so last year, we had buildings starting to do that before COVID hit. And so now all elementary buildings are going to have children eating in their classrooms with teachers using that as their literacy block and children eating in the classrooms. They can still get their their hot lunches, because what they do is they basically go out of their classroom and get their hot lunch and bring it back into the classroom. And it's worked really, really well for us. And so we're, I'm super excited about that. Dr. Brown, you want to add to that?
No, I mean, I would just second everything you said. When we had tried it at Pinewood prior to the shutdown, the kids really enjoyed it. It was a great time just for them to be able to spend some time in the classroom with their teacher and to, like you said, enjoy that read aloud time. And no kids were kind of upset for that loss of lunchroom time because they got extra recess on the playground. So it was a huge win for us, and I think it's going to be a great part of our day when we come back to school.
And the next question, based on the past survey, do we have an idea percent of parents that will send kids to school? I heard that seventy-five percent of parents at Zeeland plan to send kids to school. My guess is we're going to have about eighty-five percent of our parents choosing to send their school, their children to our traditional model back to school. That's based on the survey that we had at the end of June, but also even some of the results that are coming in. Right now, parents are already filling in that parent intent form. I believe there are already like four hundred in before the start of this town hall meeting, and it was about eighty-five percent at that point that were telling me they were choosing to send their children to the traditional model of school. Hudsonville's looking at, at this point, their survey results have shown about ninety-three percent. But they don't have all of the models that we're offering either to parents. And so that may factor into that. But I'm, I am speculating that it'll be about eighty-five percent of the parents that will choose to be in the traditional model. And if we choose extended traditional, but then choose to return to the traditional plan, would the student be placed into the classroom teacher they were originally placed in? This question's come up numerous times. I understand that becomes a big part of the decision making. Because you may, right now, really like the teacher that your child has at Pinewood, for example. And if you don't send them back and do the extended traditional, is your seat going to be saved in that teacher's classroom? We're going to do the best we can, but no guarantees. Because we're going to have to shift teachers around, assign them different students, depending on the amount of or percentage of parents that are choosing the extended traditional model. So again, we'll do the best we can, but because we're really built on a relationship model, then we want those teachers that have built relationships with kids to continue with those students. If class sizes differ quite a bit within a grade, will class members be put with another teacher? Yes, they will. So I'll give you an example. Let's say that Dr. Brown has two fourth grade classrooms at Pinewood, and she ends up with sixteen students in one class and eleven in another. That will become a class of twenty-seven, and one of the teachers will then become the the traditional, extended traditional model teacher for the other students. Now, what may happen is they may say, well, I'll do, I'll do literacy with the traditional students, and then I'll do, it could be math and science with the extended traditional, and the other teacher does the math and science with the traditional. So it might look like that, but certainly that's what we have to look at doing. How many children will you have per classroom? Will they have to social distance, especially second grade? Can we switch from one model to another? Do extended traditional model kids get to go to school at all? Dr. Brown?
Yeah, so as Superintendent Tembrink just said, we're not going to be sure of class sizes at this point. We know in second grade that class sizes aren't going to be above twenty-six. And it will just depend on how many kids we have selecting that extended traditional compared to the traditional. You can switch back from models, which we've talked about already tonight, that if there is, you start in one model, the traditional, and you want to switch back to the extended traditional or vice versa, you'll be able to do that. The only one you won't be able to switch out of is the JIA fully online. And do the extended traditional model kids get to go to school at all? You know, at this point in time, all of their education would be online because that there'll be a full extended traditional. I think we would have to talk about as a district, if there's like a special event or something going on. But we're really not going to have, like, there won't be any field trips or anything like that. So extended traditional would be fully online, but they're going to have a JPS teacher, and they're going to be doing all the same curriculum.
Who will be doing the extra cleaning? Dr. Brown and Mr. Verbique and Ms. McGoren. Look at, look at Dr. Brown's face. That came as news to her.
I was just going to go with it, Tom.
Well done, Dr. Brown. No, so certainly, there's going to be extra cleaning done. We're providing our classroom teachers with spray bottles, disinfectant. I, I gotta believe that our teachers are going to be very vigilant in making sure their rooms are clean, their tables are clean. We're required within the the governor's roadmap to have our rooms cleaned every four hours. We're going to do probably better than that, especially at the elementary level. But it will be the adults doing the cleaning, not the students. And we're also in the process of retaining some daytime, we call them day porters, that will help us clean the bathrooms in the buildings during the day, which we currently don't have. And so we're working with our EnviroClean right now to hire some day porters to especially clean our bathrooms so that we have those clean as we go. But there, there will be some direction giving for all of our classroom teachers in terms of the cleaning of the classrooms, and we've got all the supplies purchased. As a district, we've spent three hundred thousand dollars thus far just on PPE equipment. It's personal protection equipment. So that gives you an idea, and we're hoping we're applying to FEMA to get that, those costs covered. But that tells you the kind of preparation that we've been doing. And unfortunately, a lot of the stuff we ordered two months ago is still backordered. And so we're, we're looking for other avenues, but we have hand sanitizers, gloves, cleaning supplies, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And we have a thermometers that will, every grade level will have a infrared thermometer that they can use between the classes. So if there's a student that may be suspected of having a temperature, the teacher may just hit the infrared thermometer, see where they're at. Or they say they don't feel good, we hit the, you know, thermometer and and see whether or not they are spiking a fever at that time. Dr. Brown, can you tell us how pickup will go at Pinewood, parents who normally walk up to school from the surrounding neighborhoods to pick up their child?
Yep. So right now, we're going to have a little bit of a staggered pickup situation. So we're going to have our kids who ride buses kind of in between. We're going to split our kids who are walkers and are picker, picker uppers, just so that we have three groups. So we'll have like our first walker group, and we'll make sure that parents are aware of this that will come out, and I will just ask for parents to stay on different ends of the building. So I know that commonly, and people usually walk up and they go right to that bus circle. But we'll have to talk about if you're with certain classes, here will be your spot for pickup. And if you're with other classes, here is your spot for pickup. We're going to spread that out quite a bit. And we'll have round one. And I know it will be hard because we love to be able to just to talk and like check in at the end of the day. But we're going to ask for people just to pick up and to go, and then we'll have our bus riders get on, and then we'll have our round two of pickup. So then that way, we have a little bit of social distancing, and it gives some space for people who are driving in and driving out. So that is our plan right now, and obviously, that's going to be communicated more clearly as soon as we know how many traditional classrooms we have compared to extended traditional. And I'll give information on all the spots and door locations for your kiddos, and all that will be shared in detail before the start of the school year.
Can you walk us through the process when a teacher or student has been exposed or has tested positive? We've covered this several times, but I'll repeat it one more time. It's a very detailed process, a flow chart. We will work directly with the Ottawa County Health Department. For the most part, the way in which this flow chart works, that if a student or teacher has any close contact or potential exposure risk in the past fourteen days, then that person could be asked to self-quarantine for at least ten days after the symptoms. So it's going to be a matter where we're going to continue to work with the Ottawa County Health Department. If a teacher tests positive of COVID nineteen, the health department will come right in. We'll do the the tracing, see who that teacher's had contact with, how close. Again, it's all duration and distance. And if necessary, a whole classroom may have to be self-quarantined, meaning they just can't come to school for fourteen days, at which time we'd have to teach them with the extended traditional model. That's a very simplistic answer to a very complex question, but it gives you an idea. We will be, we've got a hotline right to Dr. Heidel's cell phone that we will probably be on every single day asking questions. How will students meet with specialists like speech and reading, both in person or virtual? Dr. Brown?
Yep. So within our elementary rooms, our specialists, so speech pathologists, social workers, intervention teachers, they will be not mixing kids in between different homerooms. So for the children that they service within one homeroom, they will come and the students will put on their masks, they'll transition back to that person's room. Again, only with kids from their own room that also gets those same services, and then they will be walked back. So if you're in person, you still will get your services. It just won't be mixed with kids from a different classroom. You'd only do it with kids from your own classroom. Virtual, again, that's going to depend on the IEP and exactly how often that that is offered. But it would be an online session on our Blackboard platform. We have something called Collaborate, which is similar to Zoom, but only kids within that classroom can access that, and it's completely private and confidential. So it would be something like that, like a collaborate session where you're getting those services, but in a virtual manner.
Dr. Brown, will my third grader be able to walk his younger sister to her kindergarten classroom? Is there still going to be an opportunity, especially for the kindergartners, to see the classroom and meet their teacher before school starts? They are unfamiliar with school, and it's a big change as it is for these youngsters.
Yep. So the third grader walking his sister, for sure. What couldn't happen is he couldn't stand there in line with the other kindergartners. So he can walk her and he can drop her off, but he just can't stand there with the other kindergartners because then we have kids co-mingling. And it's really easy for one to cause a domino effect, and then everyone wants brother and sister over there. So totally get the walking, but then it would have to be a drop off at the, at the classroom for where the teacher's going to meet them. For that opportunity to see the classroom, we are not able to have an open house because we obviously cannot have that many people up at the building at once. But our teachers are working already on videos to welcome kids and introduce themselves and show them the classroom. The principal will have a video. I know Superintendent Tembrink is planning on doing a video. Our school nurse, Mrs. Tembrink, is going to put together a great video on germ stopping and kind of help introduce that to kids. And once we get information back from families next week, building principals will be sending out a lot of information to families on like how to get used, your, your child used to masks, what are going to be those procedures for pickup and drop off? What would a daily schedule look like? So that you're going to have those details, you can start going through. And we'll also have some social stories. So any kiddos that are a little bit worried, it'll have pictures of your school building, pictures of the classroom. You can talk it over with the kids. It can be part of your nighttime routine, so we can really start to get that out there. We know it's not the same as in person, but we want to do everything we can to support the kiddos and get them as much visual as they can before they walk into our rooms.
And keep in mind, for a kindergartner, they don't really have to know that whole big building because they're going to go into their classroom, and the specialist teachers, everybody is coming to them. They're not going to be going to the media center, for example, and they're not going to be going to the gym. They will just be in that classroom, so they'll be leaving the classroom to get their lunch, leaving the classroom to go out for recess. But apart from that, they're not going to have to worry about that, you know, that big, huge building that they haven't been able to explore. And when that opportunity comes, then we'll make sure that they get tour, you know, the building tour, extend an open house, if that can be in January. We'll, we'll make that happen as though we're starting a new school year at that point in time. You keep hearing me say that there's hopes that this gets behind us, and that maybe by January, February, we can get back to some normalcy. But in the meantime, we, we have to make these accommodations. What do you, Dr. Brown, anticipate getting up and moving might look like in the virtual traditional model?
Yeah, so our virtual traditional model, I go into this in more detail in that, in that video, but just to kind of give you a little bit. It's not going to be kids online all day from eight forty to three forty. We know that there's no child that can sit in front of a computer for that long, or that would be in their best interest. So depending on the grade level, they're online synchronous, and synchronous just means live, like when they're live with their teacher. Their online time is going to be for, and this is kind of arranged from kindergarten all the way up to secondary, anywhere from ninety to two hundred minutes online. So probably a kindergartner, you're going to have between ninety and a hundred and twenty minutes live. And teachers will do their morning meeting and their greeting with their kids each day. They're going to go through the really important phonics lessons. They'll have some direct instruction for math. They'll have some phonemes. And then there'll be work, independent work that the child can do later on in the afternoon. And there'll also be time where the teacher might pull the child into a one-on-one session or into a small group. So that will give your, your child some flexibility. Also, if your child's classroom meets daily from like, say, nine to eleven or nine to eleven thirty, within that, that teacher is going to have them pausing, getting up, maybe projecting some goat noodles, maybe doing some scavenger hunts within their class or within their home. So they will make sure that the kid is not just sitting for that full time period. They're going to work in some movement, too. Remember, these are all of our Genesee teachers. So they are amazing teachers, and they're going to be able to read the room even within a collaborate session, and no one kids need to get up and wiggle.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're also going to be recording some lessons. So if parents, if it doesn't work for you one morning at nine o'clock, but you, you don't need to get on at one o'clock, I believe some of that's going to be recorded. Is that correct?
Yep. So in our Collaborate on Blackboard, all the sessions can be recorded, and then they're there for the child to be able to access. So something happens with a schedule, and it doesn't work for your child to log in that morning. They, they could log in the afternoon and watch the session and then still be able to participate in the work. I know that some parents have talked about they want to be able to do the work in the evening with kids. And so then, again, you could log in together. You could watch those sessions, and then you could work on the work maybe the next morning or whatever the case may be. So there's going to be flexibility there to make that schedule work for your family.
Running late does happen sometimes. So if we're running late in the morning, should parents walk their children into the foyer or just go through the drop off line?
So I would say it's going to depend on how late you are. So if you're just a few minutes late, it's normal. I, I mean, I know Pinewood parents see me just waiting at the front doors, kind of just waving kids in. So a few minutes late, it's not the end of the world. We'll get your kiddos in. We'll get them to class. If it's, you know, like past like a ten or fifteen minutes. If it's, you know, like past like a 10 or 15 minute mark, we're going to want you either to come up to the foyer or call into the office and say, hey, I just dropped off. You know, little Johnny, he should be coming in. Could you make sure he gets down to class? We just don't want any kiddo dropped if it's, you know, 10 minutes late and we don't know about it. So coming up to that foyer and giving us a wave is perfect or just calling into the office and letting us know, that would be fine as well.
Teacher letters have not been sent. Will they be? Or will the video welcome take place of the letter? If sports take place, can robotics? All right. Why don't you take the first half of that and I'll take the robotics and sports one.
Perfect. So teacher letters will be sent along with those videos. I think a lot of our teachers are holding, so we're waiting on information back from the families. So we want to make sure that whatever program that your child is in, that that is the information you get. So if you are a traditional student, like I said, I'm going to have information that's coming about how to get acquainted to masks and what's it look like for pickup and drop off. And if for my extended traditional, that's going to look a little bit different where I'm going to talk about how do you set up a learning space at home? How do you get a good schedule for your kiddo? How do you bookmark these different sites that you're going to need? So that information will be coming. Teachers are just holding because they really want to make sure that what they're sending is going to the right audience and that they've got all the correct kiddos.
And in terms of the sports and robotics, the sports are governed by the Michigan High School Athletic Association. And so they, they are given jurisdiction. As, as a school district, we have board action that makes us a member of that Michigan High School Athletic Association. And so they, they basically govern the rules surrounding the, the sports and athletics. The robotics is a club, is an activity that we value and our robotics program is absolutely incredible. For those that don't know, we did, you know, purchase the building on Baldwin. That is going to become more of a robotic center for us. That's how much we value robotics, but right now we've got to say no to robotics. Otherwise, we have to allow all the other clubs to run as well. For A, I'm sorry, teach, for ASD students who are going in and out of the ASD room and the gen ed room, how will that work? Dr. Brown?
Yeah. Yep. So at Pinewood, we have a categorical program as well. And we're really going to take our cues from the kiddos. So if they're not able to make it into the gen ed classroom that day, they, they won't go in. They'll get all their services within their categorical room. If they are doing well, then they put on their masks, they walk into their gen ed room, they spend their time in there. What we won't have is kids going back and forth every few minutes just because of the cross contamination. So, so they'll go in and they'll get their gen ed time within there. And then, you know, that will be chunked within their day. So it will look a little bit different for categoricals, just that we won't have that kind of fluid flow of, you know, sometimes it was five minutes in and five minutes out. If a child isn't able to, to make it for those longer blocks, then we'll be giving them their services within the categorical room. But we still know how important it is for them to be involved in with the gen ed. And so we're going to do whatever we can to make that happen.
How is it going to be my, how is, are we going to monitor that kid is not sick when they come to school in the morning? According to the governor's My Safe Roadmap, that is a parent responsibility to screen their students at home. And that's why it's going to be really important that our parents take that responsibility and not send their child to school when they know they're not feeling well or are spiked in a fever. We do reserve the right to take any child's temperature at any point in time or to work with a child who we deem is not feeling well enough to be in school. And so we trust our parents will do a really great job screening their children before they come. In terms of our athletic programs, our coaches will be screening the athletes, taking their temperature, asking them the questions that many of you asked when you go into the medical facilities to make sure we're, we're double screening students at that point. It is the ACT program with Dr. Clark going to continue for existing students this fall. My daughter was not able to take the ACT in the spring. Will she still get an opportunity to take the testing? Dr. Brown?
Yep. So any current fourth, fifth and sixth grade students will have the opportunity to do ACT. But it's going to be a virtual model because obviously we can't mix kids from other buildings and bring them here to, to Pinewood. So they still will have ACT. It just will be virtual and Dr. Clark will be the ones still leading that. We aren't doing any new testing right now because again, we can't mix up all of those students. But as soon as we are able to, so say January comes and that is a possibility, we will. If we're not able to until spring, anybody who had the invite previously will still have the invite. So we'll, we'll still look at new data to be of invite new testers. But if you had the invite from last spring, you'll continue to have the invite and be able to test.
And how is that going to look? How's the ACT program going to look then?
So Dr. Clark will be using Blackboard and will be offering those synchronous sessions. So she'll have like all of her fourth graders in a group, all of her fifth graders in a group. It's still going to be collaborative. She's actually working, putting together packages of consumable supplies for her starting units. So that kids would have hand-on experiences. It's still going to be an accelerated enrichment program. So they're still going to be hitting content that is much above their, their grade level. And she's going to do everything she can to make it as engaging as possible. So it will be a different avenue being virtual, but they'll still have Dr. Clark and they'll still be doing those amazing units that she provides for them.
Will the kids be able to check out books? Not out of our media centers at first, but we do have classroom libraries. And so the children will still access classroom libraries, but they will, whatever book they have, they'll have for the day. So whether it's three books, they'll have it for that day. And then they will be placed in a special bed overnight and then be returned to the classroom library for other children to gain. Our understanding again, from all the scientific evidence is that the coronavirus does not live on paper. If it does, it's not very long. And so to be able to give that overnight distancing should take care of that issue. And that's how we're going to, to work with our classroom libraries and, and close our media center for checkouts at this point in time. What will busing look like? And again, we addressed that, but busing is going to be, children will get on the bus. They'll immediately, there will be a mist hand sanitation device that they'll put their hands on and, and get their hands cleaned up. They'll sit in assigned seats with family members and will continue to keep them in those assigned seats with family members to further notice. At the end of each run, buses will be thoroughly cleaned. So we won't be practicing social distancing on our buses. Because if we had to do that, we could bus about 12 kids per bus run. And that means we just eliminate all transportation. So for parents who are willing to put their children in that environment with masks, having their, their sanitation missed and be assigned to seats with family members, that's how we're going to run our transportation. Because that's how we believe we can service most of our families that need that transportation. Do you have an example picture of what the classrooms will look like for elementary? I'm going to let Dr. Brown answer this, but what we've asked our teachers to do is remove all unnecessary items from their classroom. So all of the things that make a classroom look more like a, one of your family rooms at home are going to be removed. Bean bags, stuffed chairs, couches, unnecessary rugs, you know, lamps. Because we need that room to space out our, our tables and chairs for our students. So anything that's not what we deem necessary will not be in the classroom this year. Dr. Brown?
Yeah. So actually, over the last few years, we've been working on reducing clutter in our rooms and making them a more calming, less stimulating environment. So lots of teachers have already been working on that. We have a rubric that we don't want, like more than two thirds of walls filled with things, just because we know that's very distracting for kids. And we'll have our flexible seating, our furniture, that'll be easy for staff to be able to space kids out. And they're going to be, like I said, they may not pull everybody up on the carpet all together in a big bunch, but it's really easy for them to be able to say, okay, we're going to space out and we're all going to find a seat throughout the room. So they're going to make it as normal as they can for the kids, but while still keeping them distanced. And I don't think that parents are going to see a huge difference in classrooms. I think when you see pictures, it's going to look probably to you like more of a typical classroom, might just be a little bit less clutter than what you would normally see.
All right. And I've just been told we have about 150 questions and we're at 54. So here's what we're going to do. We have about 10 minutes left of this town hall because I have to jump on another town hall here in just a short amount of time. For those that maybe saw Facebook Live last night, I was put to the test of 30 second responses or better or less. And I surprised myself, I was equal to the task. So what we're going to do is we're going to buzz through a lot of these questions. I'm just going to go through them. I'm going to give you really quick answers the best I can. And then we're going to try to put together a Q and A document with questions that keep coming in that we'll try to send out the end of next week. That may answer a lot of your other questions here. Parent conferences be virtual, most likely they will be. And so plan on that. Will before and after school care still be available? Yes, it will be. Yes, we'll be using computers and paper in our classrooms. Our computers will be wiped down between children's use. We already talked about positive tests for COVID, quarantine. We already talked about if a student has a doctor's slip stating they cannot wear a mask due to allergies, will there be other restrictions that they'll have to do? No. If a child has a doctor's note, they will not have to wear a mask. Now, they might want to wear a shield because they may think they're standing out. So a shield would be an option for them, but if they have a doctor's note, they will not be required to wear a mask. But technology supports be awful for families to accommodate multiple children. We are going to try our very best, depending on the results for a bond issue vote today, to provide every child at home with their own device to do the extended traditional learning. That's our, that's our goal. And again, a lot depends on what the, the result of the bond vote is today. But that's our intent to have every child have their own device. Hopefully you have some, you can provide at home and we can supplement that. Schools start and then times will be the same. However, the kids' first building is being adjusted, I believe, by 10 minutes on both ends. Because that will save us significant dollars in our busing costs. So they'll start 10 minutes earlier and end 10 minutes earlier at the kids' first building. I'm trying to buzz through these to see which ones we haven't answered. Why are we not temperature checking the students at the end of the buildings? Right now, we're trying to follow the governor's roadmap, which says parents are to screen. It would take, if you can imagine, trying to take a temperature of every child at the high school of 1400 or 50 kids or the junior high of 800 kids or even the elementaries, the task that that would involve. So that's why we're not doing it at this point. Now we may change that. That may be something that we need to change by going in the school year, subject to change. Will students still be able to do band or choir? Not at the elementaries this year, I'm sorry, this fall. We don't know what the second semester might look like. Orchestra student, sixth grade orchestra students that will have some private lessons, so to speak, group lessons with the directors. Will kids need to wear master and PE and choir? There will be no choir. PE will be in the classrooms, so no. Or PE could be outside, so no, if they're outside. Is there a timeline for switching from one learning to the other? No, no timeline, just we can't, we're just not going to lie to you, do it one week to the next. If opting out of transportation, try and take your kids to separate buildings, we get the same time. Will there be leniency as arrival time? Yes, we have to have flexibility this year. And so there will be flexibility, but we want the parents to do the very best they can, but there will be flexibility. We hear that we need well ventilated buildings to help prevent the spread of the virus. Are we ensuring that our schools are ventilated properly? We are doing the very best we can. That's one of the reasons that it's on the bond issue is it's time to have our ventilation systems replaced for situations just like this. But we'll continue to do things with windows being opened and airflow, et cetera, et cetera. Our, our filters and our unit events have all been changed this summer as well, so that should help. Just trying to get through the ones we haven't answered yet. What, what online, what programs are being used for online learning? This is something that you have to understand is unique to Genesee. Most districts have to use outsourced programs. Genesee, we have Genesee International Academy that has developed their own courses taught by Genesee teachers, Genesee curriculum over the course of the past 10 years. This summer, our administrators and teachers, and Dr. Brown led part of that charge, developed Blackboard courses similar to what GI has been doing for years, but modeling it after what we're doing in our traditional classrooms. So you should be very proud to be in a district that we have teachers that have done that work over the summer, didn't get paid for it. And we have Genesee International Academy that I can tell you right now, every district gets jealous of. And I think we're up 300 students at Genesee International Academy already. Yeah, this is a tough one. What considerations should I take into account when trying to decide my best option for my child? Concerned about masks, also concerned about my child not getting social interaction she may need as a sixth grader. I guess you know your child best. If it was my child, I'd say, hey, we're going to, we're going to start traditional. We're going to try the mask. We'll get you a gator if that's better. We'll get you the best mask, whatever, because every mask feels different. Get them something that feels really good, the Genesee mask that we're giving them, a silky with a, with a nice wildcat on it. Have them try it. And, and if it doesn't work, you can switch to the, you know, extended traditional. But that socialization, if you're worried about that, is important and it's going to be difficult to get at home. Let's see. Can extended traditional students meet personally with their teacher if they need extra help? Yes, that will be set up for sure. Do you know how close to phase three we are as a county? Let me tell you this, I've been in contact with the governor's office directly. We are not going to phase three. Simply the governor got beat up quite significantly by closing schools, moving to phase three. At this point in time, she's relying on local control to make decisions in regard to when to close schools, not to close schools. With that being said, if there's a huge spike and you start to see our hospitals overrun, emergency rooms filling up again, then certainly we would be moving to phase three, but I don't see us moving to phase three before the start of this school year. So that extended traditional plans estimate a student to spend about three hours a day of direct instruction or approximately three hours total work per day. Dr. Brown, is that about right, what you're asking on that?
That's going to be different depending on grade level. Obviously, if it's an upper L student, like a fifth or sixth grader, I imagine that they're going to have about two hours or two and a half hours live each day. And then they would have another about two hours of work to do. Maybe for a kindergarten, that looks different because we're trying to mimic what we're doing in our traditional classroom. So obviously, as the kids are younger, they get more movement breaks, they get more shutdown breaks. So it's going to be less time for the lower L and more time for the upper L. But it won't be any more time than what in a, a full school day would be with removing those recesses and lunch periods.
And yes, we'll be offering before and after school care in each building as we normally have. Clarification on that Friday discussion we had from the secondary calendar. Follow the school calendar as published. Yes, there are some Mondays off instead of a Friday. That Friday was more about a block schedule concept versus an actual Friday. So we'll be following the school calendar as published. Hot lunch is certainly going to be offered for students to, to access and available for free and reduced students as well. How will you handle bathroom breaks for the children? Dr. Brown?
Yep. So many of our lower L classrooms have bathrooms right within the room. So that would help maintain them within that cohort. And then buildings are going to be able to build a schedule for the gang bathrooms so that they don't go at the same time as another class. So we're still maintaining that cohort social distancing between other homerooms.
Yes. And the third through fifth grade classrooms, there's a question about how small the classrooms are. Again, we're requiring the teachers to remove all unnecessary things from the classroom. You're surprised at how much space we have. Again, we're requiring the teachers to remove all unnecessary things from the classroom. You're surprised at how much space we have. If we move some of that out of there and we will social distance the best we can. Third through fifth graders will not be wearing a mask all day long. We're going to find ways to, to make sure that doesn't happen. Keep in mind, we may only have twenty kids per classroom once the, the parents decide on the extended traditional model. Can parents still volunteer at school? Not at the beginning of the year. We're going to keep that pretty sanitized in terms of who's in our buildings, who's not. We got to limit the number of adults coming and going. And hopefully, as the year progresses, we'll be able to do that. The touch points will be cleaned throughout the day. I would say probably, depending again, if it's the cohort classrooms versus the sixth grade classrooms and, and movement, but I would suggest they're probably going to be cleaned at least four times a day. Let's see. Will students allergies, if things today be sent home, record to wear a mask all day? Yeah, that's going to be an issue with the, the allergies and the sneezing and the coughing, all that. We'll deal with the allergy issues. It's going to be a problem. And that's why we're going to have paper masks available as need be as well for students. If we decide to do extended, will there be a list of what we need? Yes. And we'll work with you in terms of getting you a, a device if you need it. How will notification happen? Will we get a text message in the morning not to come to school if someone in the class is exposed or diagnosed? Certainly, we'll use every communication tool available. Hopefully, we'll know by the end of the day, you know, so we'll contact you that night. So it's not, you know, all of a sudden you get a text that morning, go, oh, now what am I doing with my child? We hope we'd be able to communicate the night before, but we'll do the best we can to communicate as quickly as we can when we get notified. Will students be exposed to cleaners throughout the day? If you're asking about the, the, I guess, the cleansing materials that we're using, those right now, according to everyone we've talked with in the field, are not, do not have any potential harm to children. And so we're going to, you know, certainly if we're wiping down desks, it's not going to be right in front of the child. It'll be a time when they're moving and, and doing other things.
Tom, we're at six thirty-two right now, just FYI.
Thank you. I thought we were getting through these pretty quick, weren't we? I appreciate it. Okay. So I think we got through a lot of these. A lot of these are repeats. So what we'll do is we've got them all documented, all your questions. And then we will try to, again, do a Google Doc that addresses all the questions. Not individually, because there's a lot of the same questions over and over again. But we're going to conceptually look at the topics and try to get those addressed for you. Thank you for joining us, this town hall meeting tonight. I hope that it was worthwhile, that you've got some quite, you know, there's more questions than answers for sure. And we'll continue to come up with the answers that we can. Partner with us, trust us. We'll do the best we can in working with your families as we move through this. More communication to come. We're still in the first week of August. The first day of students is not until August twenty-fifth. So there's still a lot of days ahead of us. But hopefully this paid dividends for the time you invested with us tonight. Thank you, Dr. Brown, for joining me and helping us to, to answer many of these questions. Certainly, there's, there's a lot more we could be talking about. We thought an hour and a half might be a good time. We probably could have three hours here, but we got to jump on with another group of parents. So I appreciate you taking the time to be with us. And, and again, we'll try to continue to communicate the best we can and not confuse you anymore as we get different answers to some of the questions we answered tonight. All right. Thank you very much. And we'll be talking to you soon. Bye.